Hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the more limited people as the traditional Aboriginal custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to all who are past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a moment of quiet reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to this, the first meeting of Clarence City Council for the year, on this Monday, the 15th of January 2024. I would like to warmly welcome everyone back and trust you've all enjoyed a wonderful break over the Christmas New Year period, fully recharged for the year ahead. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by a privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies, we, councillor Richard James has a leave of absence and councillor James Walker is an apology, apart from that we've got a full house. Item number three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors? Deputy man? So that's item 11.2. Thank you, councillor Hunter?
Item 7.1.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Yeah, thank you very much, so noted. Now we're heading to our omnibus items. Item number four is 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 11th of December 2023 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we move now on to item 4.2, Mayor's Communications, and I table my diary entries from the 12th of December 2023 through to today. Note that the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie, councillor Goine and councillor Chong have also represented me during that period of time as well, and I thank them all very much for that. Item 4.2.2 matters for noting, as everyone would be aware, the proclamation of His Majesty King Frederick the Tenth and His Majesty Queen Mary of Denmark occurred yesterday, well, the 14th of January, but early this morning for us, and I note that the Danish flag was flying outside council chambers today in honour of this momentous occasion. I'd also like to take my card from Pam and Tony Green, thanking council for the Clarence Christmas Brunch held at the Howra Community Centre on Christmas Day. And I'll just read this card, which says, "Thank you so much for the Clarence Christmas Brunch in Howra. We are in, we are over eighty, and it would have been just the two of us at home, so it was terrific to be in such good company, enjoy wonderful food. Thank you again." And that's from Mr and Mrs Green. Along with councillor Hume and councillor Chong, I also was able to attend that brunch. I'd like to extend our appreciation on behalf of council to Major Giles Clifford and his team at the Salvation Army Clarence City on another outstanding Christmas brunch. I'd also like to table now a letter from Mrs Alison Merridew, who writes, "Congratulations on the excellent Bellreav Beach Party held on Saturday the 6th of January. I attended later in the day and found it was excellent. I saw two great bands, the food vans were all still serving, lots of kids out dancing and having fun, a great community atmosphere. I also noticed that despite the large crowds, the park area was still clean with no noticeable litter. Some of my friends and neighbours also attended at other times during the day and all said how much they had enjoyed it. The sand sculpture of the whale was also really impressive. It was a great event. I hope council will continue to do more of these." Thanks regards, Mrs Alison Merridew. Along with deputy mayor, I also attended that event, and it was a fantastic inaugural event that was so well supported by the community. It really was a pleasure to see our Bellry Falls shore being utilised by so many, enjoying this stunning natural asset and each other's company. I'd like to thank Mrs Coburn and her Arts Events team for such a successful and professionally executed event that brought joy to so many. So, thank you very much. I also take a letter from Mr Russell Hanson, who writes, "Congratulations to you and the council on the awarding of the High Performance Centre to the city of Clarence. Perfect position for the team and the public, and coupled with a spectacular new stadium across the river, and a team will be financially sustainable and above all, prime for early success. Sometimes decisions can be tough to achieve, but this and the stadium are fine to ignite the passions of all Tasmanians. Let's build it." I also table a copy of a submission from the Greater Hobart Councils to the state government regarding the Drang River Doon Ferry Master Plan. And I'll table all those documents. We now move on to item 4.3, council workshops as listed in the agenda. Tending petitions, CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor. No, there are no petitions that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Moving down to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. I note that councillor Walker is an apology tonight, so moving on to Southern Tasmanian Regional Waste Authority, councillor Warren.
I have two reports to table. First of all, the inaugural annual report for the Southern Tasmania Regional Waste Authority, and also the quarterly report of 31st of December 2023. So I've tabled those. I've already done so digitally, but just draw everyone's attention to those being now available.
Thank you, councillor Warren. And from my perspective, there's nothing to report on either the Tas Water Corporation or the Greater Hobart Committee at this time. Colleagues, are there any other reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies? Councillor Chong?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I've tabled a report from the Redford Bicentennial Planning Committee on the first weekends, the parade weekend and the exhibitions that took place.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other? Councillor Hunter?
I'd just like to table the minutes from the Sustainability Advisory Committee from December 11th.
Wonderful, thank you. There being no others, we move now on to 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports are the 11th and 19th of December 2023, and the 1st and 8th of January 2024 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Well, then, I know we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Thank you councillor Hume, seconded councillor Goine, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving now on to item five, which is public question time. 5.1, public questions on notice. Mr Thomas Chick, as listing agenda, CEO, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr Thomas Chick provided the following question on notice in relation to the Greater Hobart Bushfire Exposure Index. The question was, Goni- Goni- Goniyon had recently released their Greater Hobart Bushfire Exposure Index funded by the Australian Government and in partnership with Hobart, Glenorkie and Kingborough councils. The index and associated report cover only those three councils. Is it notable that Clarence, the only remaining member of the Greater Hobart Committee, is not included? Was Clarence City Council approached to participate in the index, and if so, did Clarence decline? If so, for what reasons? The answer to that question, or those questions are, the work on the Greater Hobart Bushfire Index, Exposure Index, was completed in 2022 and released at the end of 2023. Clarence City Council was not invited to be part of this project, which was funded by the federal government and the state government. The project coordinator was a collaboration with the University of Tasmania and funded by the Tasmanian SES National Disaster Risk Reduction Grant. Clarence Council did provide a letter of support for another round of funding to replicate the mapping in Clarence, however, this application was unsuccessful. The data is input into the model looking at bushfire risk and is therefore beneficial to council. We will write to the state government to advise that we are interested in a partnership approach for future opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. 5.3, there's no answers to previous questions, take your notice. We move now to 5.4, which is questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? There being none, we move now on to item six, deputations by members of the public. Members of the public making a deputation reminded that they are limited to three minutes, and in fairness, I will strongly enforce that, and a timer will sound at the end of that time. CEO, deputations, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four deputations tonight. The first deputation is from Ms Helen Tate in relation to the AFL High Performance Centre.
Thank you, Ms Tate. Yes, your name and tablet, please.
Helen Tate from Mornington.
Thank you.
During a recent council meeting, Mayor Blomley stated, "If there is one thing he has learned in recent years, it is the need to appropriately and professionally engage with our community and other key stakeholders to understand their view and represent their interests," and criticised the state government for not following good practices. A consultation process for the City Heart project has been in motion now for three years. The resulting reports from both 2020 and 2023 overwhelmingly conclude that we need to retain public green open spaces for the enjoyment of the community now and in the future. Participants were adamant that this land should be open and available for all of the community. The comments around civic and employment opportunities for Rosney repeatedly called for improvement of the rivulet and better access to this and the green spaces of the parklands. The consultation for the AFL Centre has been extremely rushed when compared to the City Heart project. An open consultation period of four weeks for the AFL Centre versus three years for the City Heart project. There is widespread feeling in the community that the consultation process has been flawed. Many vested groups and individuals were not directly consulted or knew of the consultation process until it was too late. Notwithstanding the questionable reach of the consultation process, the results of the online consultation indicate that the majority of residents disagreed with the proposal to locate the development at both the Rosney Park and Charles Hand Park sites, with only 42% in favour. Now, consider that at the time of the survey, respondents did not have access to any specifics surrounding the designs. They were not aware that the recently revamped state-of-the-art skate park would have to go. They were not aware of just how much of these valued community spaces were going to be locked up and just how destructive to the existing nature of the sites the development will be. The removal of mature trees, digging out of huge volumes of material to level the sloping sites to a depth of up to 10 metres, the inevitable impact on site hydrology, the rivulet and the large numbers of water birds that breed there. The whole process has been rushed. I understand that when councillors voted in favour of the dual-site option, many were not even aware that Charles Hand Park is a designated off-leash dog exercise area. How can the vote be considered safe when the councillors did not appear to know what they voted for, and when the vote itself was based on the outcome of a rushed consultation with no specifics of the proposed designs available to respondents? Please consider a motion to rescind the vote from 11th of December to allow time for a proper consultation of the proposal and to further explore other site options.
Thank you, Ms Tate. CEO?
Thank you, Mayor. A second deputation tonight is from Mr Terry Pogley, also in relation to the AFL High Performance Centre.
Name and suburb, please, Mr Pogley.
Yeah, Terry Pogley, I represent CDOGS. I might want to talk about Charles Hand Park. 3.8 in your last papers said that the Department of State Growth said that a secondary oval should ideally be within a few minutes' walking distance of the facility. Well, Charles Hand Park isn't an ideal situation. In fact, it is the worst possible location you could have for a football oval, and we're very disappointed in that. There are other sites, certainly within the even jogging distance for a second ground, that you could have chosen, but you chose to have Charles Hand Park, and I, for goodness sake, I have no idea why. You conducted a 2% survey, and when Charles Hand Park came up, it got 17 votes. It came seventh, and yet you had better options here with Cambridge, with 98 votes. You had Gilson Bay Lindispan, which is walking distance, 54 votes. How can you ignore the results of the survey that you sit on and say, "We represent the community and we consult"? It's rubbish. You went to the Charles Hand Park, you did not consult with anyone who owns a dog, no one, and that is our dog park. Seven hectares, Austin. I want to know what site you've got.
Mr Pogley, excuse me, one moment, stop the clock, please. Please don't yell. We're in a confined space here, we can hear you, you've got the benefit of the microphone.
I'm allowed, of course.
Excuse me, I appreciate that there are firm views on this matter, and this is a democratic process. Please don't yell while you're addressing the council.
Understood.
Please restart the clock.
But we are, it comes in seventh. From the people who use survey as the grounds where we should place this second oval, why did you choose the other park that we're talking about now? You didn't consult, I don't believe. The dog owners, we know. You didn't consult the people who used the skate park, and I'm curious to know whether you actually did consult well, Rosney College, because if you didn't consult the school association, nor the 895 students, and you only spoke to the principal, you didn't consult at all. He's a public servant, and he's bound by the state service's code of conduct. He represents whatever the government says. I spent 16 years as a school principal, and I understand that very well. Your career is on the line. I think your consultation process over this momentous decision was appalling. You were rushed, yes, but you dismissed other people's opinions. This is a second seven-hectare dog off-leash exercise area, and some of you did not know about that. There are 10,000 dogs in Clarence, 22,000 households. Every third house has a dog in it, and there are seven suburbs that circle that park. Rosney, Bellreav, Mornington, Warran, Lindispan, Rose Bay and Montague Bay. It's the hub of the community, and you're going to put a football ground in there that could go anywhere else. Take the park lengths. You've got your $70 million, but for goodness sake, don't take the second park. And we can get through that, I think, and your vote could change to something like 10-2 rather than 7-5.
Thank you. Just confirming your suburb, please.
Beg your pardon?
Where are you from?
I'm from Lindis- Oh, yes, I'm from Lindispan.
Thank you very much.
Spent a life there.
Thank you. Please take your seat. That's your time. Thank you. Ms Asuya?
Thank you, Mayor. Our third deputation tonight is from Ms Michelle Laffer in relation to the AFL High Performance Centre.
Thank you, Ms Laffer. Your suburb, please.
Yes, I'm Michelle, and I'm from Bellreav, and I'm dismayed by the selection of Rosney Parkland and Charles Hand Park as the preferred location for an AFL High Performance Centre. It should be a given that our city parklands are off-limits to developments which would see them substantially urbanised and privatised. More appropriate sites are available, sites which aren't public parklands rich in birdlife, which are flat and which don't require the gouging of an entire hillside. If by democratic process Tasmania gets an AFL Training Centre, which is not a done deal, this centre could be located at a more suitable site. The council survey of October, November 2023, with overall result 64% of respondents in favour of the Rosney Parkland's location, has been cheered on by AFL-supporting government figures and media outlets as if it provides definitive social licence for the location. But the result sits in striking contrast to the findings in the council's comprehensive community consultation report of November 2020. Three quotes from the report. One, "The most common theme throughout all stages of community consultation was the need to retain public green open spaces for the enjoyment of the community now and in the future. Two, there is no appetite for development that might encroach on valued green open spaces. Three, a clear majority of participants believed the golf course should be repurposed as a multi-use parkland," end quote. This is a community fiercely supportive and protective of its public green spaces. The survey sample is small for such a major decision, 959 respondents, and took place over just four weeks. More information about the impacts of the preliminary engineering works required with this particular site should have been provided to help respondents make an educated decision, given these parklands exist in a busy urban and recreational setting with teeming birdlife along the rivulet. And, just to speculate, how many of the October 2023 survey respondents who were in favour of a high-performance centre at Rosney would still be in favour if the full potential of both parks had already been realised, with walking and nature trails, picnic benches, children's nature play area, dog facilities, modern shared use overpass to connect both parks, and other features the community had indicated it wanted in the 2020 City Heart report? I believe few would still be in favour of the AFL option, because the true value of these parks would then be self-evident, and most people would see it as unthinkable to replace what they had with car parks and buildings and football ovals. I asked the council to rescind the motion at past at the last meeting to take more time for proper consideration of the issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms Laffer. Asuya?
Thank you. Our final deputation tonight is from Mr Matt Brown in relation to the development application for Six Page Court.
Thank you, Mr Brown. Your suburb, please.
Matt Brown from Rose Bay.
Thank you.
I'm one of the owners behind the development proposal for 10 multiple dwellings and three communal residences at Six Page Court on tonight's agenda. You may have heard of a relatively new term in Australia of build-to-rent. Our business has been doing this for over 10 years, and it's our intention to retain all 13 units to meet the needs of the rental market, as we have done with the nine units at Four Page Court and several other sites across Hobart. I'm sure you're all familiar with the current problems we have with the shortage of rental stock and the dwindling number of building approvals in the pipeline. We've looked at this problem and the demographic changes in housing trends across Australia. Due to the cost of housing, more people are living with parents longer, sharing with friends, and some are seeking smaller one-bedroom dwellings. We can't solve an existing problem with old thinking, so our proposal seeks to solve some of these issues by providing a range of housing types. All of the 10, all 10 of the townhouses have en suites for each bedrooms specifically to meet the needs of residents sharing, and will feature solar panels to assist with rising power costs. The three communal dwellings will effectively provide five one-bedroom micro apartments with shared communal facilities, and will include all costs for power, water and internet, all in a fixed weekly rental fee, reducing the need for duplication of these costs for each occupant. Some of you may be familiar with this project, as it came before council two years, two years ago for 12 units, one less than the maximum allowed under the planning scheme for the site. Due to the size of the project, I actually went around and visited 42 neighbours to show them the proposal and discuss any concerns they may have in an effort to try and resolve them. At the last meeting, there were six representations from neighbours covering a range of issues. An appeal was lodged, and although some of those, these issues could have been resolved due to the significant costs of the appeal and the associated delays, we needed to add an extra unit to make the project financially viable, which meant the cost-effective thing to do was to withdraw the appeal and lodge a new application for 13 units. The planners have worked tirelessly with us through all the issues to be able to present a compliant application tonight, which addresses the concerns raised. The main changes were as follows. The orientation of the 10 three-storey townhouses was twisted to align with the boundary to satisfy the sunlight to private open space requirements, and also addressed concerns regarding setbacks and the retaining walls, which in the original proposal were only 1.5 metres from the rear boundary. We were able to double that distance to three metres. We've allowed ample off-street parking and a communal waste storage area to minimise impacts of parking and wheelie bins on the street frontage of Page Court. I trust you will have all visited the site, and you would have noticed that there are very few, if any, cars parked on the streets below our site and included off-street parking within our nine-unit development at Page Court. Further up into the cul-de-sac, parking is an issue due to inadequate off-street parking, so we understand why residents may have initially been concerned. However, we feel we have sufficiently addressed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we only entered a deputation.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to the end of our deputations. Moving now on to item seven, which is planning authority matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. I note that councillor Kennedy and councillor Hunter have declared an interest, so that I let them leave. I thank the public gallery as well for your attendance this evening, your interest. Thank you very much. Well, colleagues, we move now on to item 7.1, development application for Seven Bengalee Street, Lordordale, additions and alterations for a single dwelling. I note there's an alternate motion to be moved by councillor Warren. Thank you, councillor Warren. Is there a second of it? Thank you, councillor Goine. Councillor Warren?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the, the planning officers for their report into this DA, particularly our new head of planning, Daniel Marr. Welcome aboard. And we're starting you off with perhaps a slight alternate motion. The planning officers have done their job. They've applied the, the planning scheme to the letter of the law and come up with a motion for refusal. The- The proposal complies except for the garage, which according to the planning scheme is too close to the road. Now, I visited the property yesterday. Unfortunately, the owners weren't home. I'd like to chat it. But it seems to me that this is an example where the planning scheme makes no sense, because there's already a carport in this position, and the proposed garage is actually smaller than the carport and further back from the street. The section that we're referring to here, 8.4.2, I believe, of the scheme, says that setbacks for car parks and garages have to be a certain distance from the primary frontage of the property. It's difficult in this case. It's a triangular property, so it's only got one frontage. It hasn't got sort of the two sides that you might normally have. But to me, this doesn't impact on the streetscape, which is the other primary concern here. There are other examples in the area, maybe not within 100 metres, which is the test used by the planning scheme, but certainly there is a precedent in the area. And if you want to think about it, the carport, the existing carport, is in self-precedent. So if this was a proposal for the block next door, we'd be able to say, look at number seven. It's already been done. So the fact that this is demolished as part of the proposal and then becomes non-compliant seems to make no sense. The other thing about affecting the streetscape, the garage and the existing carport are screened by a reasonably high white picket fence. So I don't believe that it does impact on the streetscape. And so I would like to move this alternate motion, which grants approval to this DA. And I seek my colleagues' support.
Councillor Goine, a second up. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank councillor Warren for bringing forward this alternative, for another common sense approach to our planning scheme, and for the staff for assisting in making the alternative motion. Thank you. I seek colleagues' support.
Councillor Molder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The word common sense is thrown around a lot in these planning matters sometimes, and I'm sure no one is going to die in a ditch. There are no representations, which is a pretty good clue as to what the community think. But apparently, they're not allowed to think. They just have to obey the planning scheme as we are supposed to do. The problem, as Oscar Wilde used to say, with common sense is it's not very common. So I'll be supporting this motion.
Any other colleagues wish to make a contribution? There's probably no need for a reply.
There is. I thank councillor Molder for raising the point of representations, because I did mean to refer to that. I do appreciate that just because there were no representations in the first round does not preclude people actually joining the, any appeal as an appellant. But I believe it's highly unlikely. So I think that, that, yes, I think that the right thing to do here is to approve a development which is actually further back from the street than the existing carport. So I do seek colleagues' support.
Right, so we've got the alternate motion, 7.1. That is that Seven Bengali Street be approved, subject to conditions and advice. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous. Thank you. Please invite councillor Hunter and councillor Kennedy back in to join us. Thank you. Now, we move on to item 7.2, which is a development application for 12 Tulay Court Sanford for dwelling and outbuilding. There's alternate motion from councillor Molder that's been circulated. Is there a second up? Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Molder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This application is for a dwelling at Sanford in a zone that's described as rural residential, and it meets all the criteria in terms of size, setbacks, usage of the land, et cetera, et cetera, that the planning scheme requires. With one exception, that this subdivision was created many years ago whilst as a quarry operating, in the expectation that this quarry would cease operation in the near future. This council, or the previous council, has already approved a dwelling, contrary to the technical requirements of the covenant that's on this particular piece of land. And the covenant relates to the operations of the quarry. The quarry is a low-grade or low-noise level, should I say, operation. It has no blasting. The only noise that it emits, and it's a quarry, so it's in a hole to start off with, is from machinery used to dig up the red gravel and to, and to, crush is the wrong word, I reckon. Screening is a better word, because it's already in, it's red gravel. It's the kind of stuff that council uses for its footpaths and for base loads and things like that. In fact, council no longer uses this particular quarry, because, you know, the grading of it's come down to the point where council is now sourcing quarry, would you believe, from somewhere out at Fawcett because of the, it's better quality out there now. So the best, the best years of this quarry's life are done. The issue relates to the noise. And can I say that the thing with the noise is that, under the EPA requirements, there's a 45 decibel noise level, which should not be exceeded when there's a residential thing. The proposal complies with that clause, because the sensitive use will not constrain the operation of an existing extractive industry. And it complies because the primary areas of inhabitants will experience levels below the daytime criteria of 45 decibels, as per the noise impact assessment. The issue with the noise comes down to the fact that the 45 decibels applies to the whole property. Yet the actual residential and other building components on this site are not, are within a zone that is less than the 45. So we're now talking about standing in the back corner of a rural residential lot and complaining about 45 decibels of noise, which actually isn't making it to the house. Now, 45 decibels of noise is fairly quiet. A normal conversation about the level that I'm having with you now is around 60 decibels. A fridge which is described as silent is around about 36 decibels. And a whispered conversation is about 40 decibels. So what's the impact of this noise on the property as a whole, let alone in the constructed dwellings? And these days, with the standard building codes of six, you know, that you've got to meet that, you know, the walls are insulated, there's foam, there's things like that. You would not hear the sound of this track excavator or the motor that's shaking the screening systems on the top of the property. You wouldn't even hear it anywhere. So, and as many residents will point out to you, they don't hear it at all. So this is a quote, this is another case of, common sense tells you that if you bought a block of land, that the level of noise from this quarry, there will never be a blasting permit issued, and there will be no need for one. You dig this, you dig this loose gravel with a back-up. You don't need a blasting. So it's just common sense that this property should be able to go. And in the end, if the noise is a problem, I can imagine us entertaining a complaint from the people who built the house, knowing full well what the noise levels were in the property. So the victim here happens to be the developer.
Councillor Kennedy.
Nothing more to add to that, Mr Mayor. Only that most of us around the table would be familiar with the area and the quarry. And I thank councillor Molder for that very informative explanation on sound.
Any other co-councillor?
Always.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I can't support the alternative, and I will be foreshadowing the officer's recommendation. The reason for this is I am actually sympathetic to councillor Molder's arguments. I'm sympathetic to the argument that 45 decibels isn't a lot of noise, and particularly when you're talking about outside the house and, you know, outside on a rural property. That, you know, ostensibly, the thing the residents are most going to be concerned about is what's the noise while they're within the house, you know, enjoying time at home. Having said that, we actually really don't know what the noise impact of the quarry is going to be on the property, because as the officers have pointed out in their report, the noise report was deficient. And I'll refer you to the bottom of page 56, going on to page 57, where it states, while the noise report demonstrates the dwelling and unlimited area around it would achieve the required noise levels, it neglects to consider the full potential of the quarry operations, specifically the movement of equipment and machinery across the site when accessing the remaining resource. The noise report focuses on activity at the eastern end of the quarry with no consideration of the quarry activity and its off-site impacts when mining the significant volume of remaining resource elsewhere on the site. When factoring in the full potential of the quarry activity and movement of plant and machinery around the quarry, the modelling is taken to significantly underestimate the noise emissions upon the subject's site. And as a result, the potential for annoyance to occur is significantly higher. Now, look, in councillor Molder's, write a reply, or other councillors' contribution to the debate, I'm still open to be convinced. But my reading of that is, we don't know what the noise impact is going to be, because the noise report hasn't covered all of the activity on the quarry. And, you know, that's the information we need to be able to approve this application. Thank you.
Councillor Hunter, thank you.
I like councillor Hume understands the sentiment of councillor Molder's alternative motion. However, I actually support the officer's recommendation on the basis that there is a covenant on the title of all properties within the subdivision. I take covenant seriously, whether it's about noise, whether it's about environmental, natural values. It's all the same to me. And this covenant was the premise in which the subdivision was approved. The covenant outlines that all future residential development will be subject to the requirements of the attenuation code. I believe we, as a planning authority, need to adhere to this covenant. Approving this development will set a precedent by rendering the covenant useless. I realise this isn't a great outcome for the people who purchase the property. However, the info related to the constraints of the covenant were available to them when they purchased the land.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Warren and then councillor Goine. Thank you, councillor Molder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is an interesting one. I don't believe that you can equate covenants to do with natural environment with noise, because who is, who is the victim here? I mean, you're, if you're destroying the trees and the environment, then that's, that's a clear problem. But if you're choosing to build in an area where the noise is slightly higher for a small number of years, why do we feel the need to say, no, you must not, you must build in a quiet area? Surely that's a person's choice. And the fact that this development is as far away from the noise as possible on the block surely goes some way to giving some comfort there. But, yeah, it's not the same as conditions that are put on land for good use that serves the public. This doesn't serve the public. It doesn't serve the quarry. The quarry don't care how far their noise travels. It's only the people who choose to build on this property who are going to be impacted. And they've made it clear that they think that it's manageable, and I'm happy to support the alternative.
Councillor Goine.
I'm speaking on this one mainly because I thought councillor Molder's alternative was pretty common sense again. Again, I love, it's one of my favourite terms.
Thank you, Oscar.
Anyhow, I would like to say, after consulting with members of the local community, the noise that they have, you know, they expressed no concern over the noise. And for me, that was kind of what solidified the fact that, you know, we talk about property shortages and for the sake of, you know, a humming fridge or, you know, me having a whispered conversation, we might be reducing somebody's capacity to build on a perfectly good block of land. So thank you for the alternative, and I seek colleagues' support.
Any other colleagues wish to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie, thank you.
My councillor Goine, I hadn't intended to speak either. But I will make the observation that this is one of those matters where we talk about common sense, where we talk about something being less non-compliant, and, you know, those sorts of things that we deal with from time to time, completely respecting the views of all colleagues in respect of this. It is, I think, as councillor Warren indicated in previous motion, one of those occasions where you've got to appreciate the history. You've got to appreciate the position that people may find themselves in because of changes and things that go on from time to time. I do have some sensitivity to the matters that have been put forward by councillor Molder. I think it's quite a sensible alternative that's been proposed. And remembering too, that essentially what we're saying is, we're mapping out an area that is compliant. That's in fact what this motion seeks to do, identifying that the area for the build does comply. Whether you want to argue about the report that was done into the noise, I would have thought that that's more a matter for the EPA at some point, rather than council to have discussions about the noise, compliance and all those sorts of things. So I'm quite comfortable with the motion, the alternate motion that's been put forward in respect of, we are talking about compliance on the information that's actually before us at the moment, which is the best that we can act on. So I'll be supporting the alternate motion, because I think it is sensible. The onus is on, of course, the developer. And of course, there's the EPA to look at these things in the future. So for that reason, I'm comfortable to support the alternative.
Councillor Molder, what a reply, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of little points briefly. We talk about the noise of machinery in the background as being, you know, fairly low decibels as far as the house is concerned, and then only marginally in terms of the rest of the property, where people won't be living, but where people might, you know, wander around during the daytime. Can I suggest possibly some of the hooning that goes on in these areas would be making incredibly much more noise than the tractor down the bottom? And, and, and so that's an issue. In the rural residential zone, one of the common complaints that I get are people about their neighbours. And you don't have to be in the rural residential, up and down my street, up and down urban areas. You get the loud, noisy trail bikes that annoy and disrupt everyone else like that. So compared to those nuisances, which are genuine nuisances, this is just so small that it doesn't warrant. And you can take a black letter law to the planning scheme, and you can take a black letter notion to covenants. But in the end, there's an expectation that this quarry will eventually cease operation, and that was the basis originally of the original covenants. And the fact that is, that its noise is never going to increase despite the reports over thing. You look at the noise attenuation report was actually suggested by the EPA. The EPA did not say, no, you can't build it here. It said to the proponents, go and get yourself an environmental noise report, which they did, and then, and also consider any attenuation measures. My motion actually has that attenuation measure in there in terms of the 2.2 metre wall, which is designed to even reduce that impact greatly. So at the risk of offending everyone, if you can't hear me, you have to vote for this.
Thank you, councillor Molder. Colleagues, I now put the alternate motion, which is for approval for the development application for 12 Tulay Court Sanford, a dwelling outbuildings, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? So carry. Thank you. Moving now on to item 7.3, which is a development application for Six Page Court Burreyn, 10 multiple dwellings and three communal residences. Call for a mover of the motion, please. Thank you, councillor Molder. Councillor Kennedy, this is a duo today. Councillor Molder, thank you.
A duo or a faction, Mr Mayor?
Let's start as you wish to continue.
Let me just say that we've had this one before, and we've had some discussions before. And the previous application, which was the previous council for the new ones, is... And the previous application, which was the previous council for the new ones, was actually rejected by this council, although we do believe, I think when we were talking about the local planning provision schedules, we were actually, it was suggested that this should be perhaps in a residential, because it's these quarry-type operations, ex-quarries, and I think about the one in South Arm Road, that are so suited to high-density residentials, especially when they're near to services. They're near to the sort of services that we will never see at Skylines, but that's another point. The fact is that this is a development. It meets this communal housing, which is a new concept, I think, in terms of us talking about buildings specifically made for it, because the normal communal housing, as we've found from many reports about the housing crisis, how people are managing their way through this, is through turning what used to be single-family residential properties into communal housing as various people move in. Here we have an opportunity to design exactly that. I know that the representations the last time all was about bulk and scale and height and all, and what they really come down to now is traffic issues, which we can do nothing about. We can blame the people who built Cambridge Road 100 years ago, but the big issue is the waste bin management. And that's not a new issue in intense areas. It happens all over the place, but that's the thing. But, you know, relative measures are being taken and are being addressed to this. So I will commend this particular motion, even though I voted against the last one, because it actually basically conforms to the planning scheme. It's got some representations. There are some minor exclusions into the building envelopes, but to me, this is a very good and much-needed development, and I commend it to council.
councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And very briefly, I'd just like to thank Matt Brown for his deputation tonight, and also commend him and the planning staff for the amount of work that's actually gone on to get us to this stage. And those that are around the table that have been here before with this DA know the pain that has actually gone on for everyone. So I commend the motion too, and I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? We don't need for write a reply. Thank you. I'll put the motion, that is, excuse me. Development application for six-page Cork Bahrain, ten multiple dwellings and three communal residences be approved subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Well, I now advise that council has now concluded its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. Move now on to item eight, report of officers, there are none, eight-point. Moving on to item nine, motions of notice, there are none. Item 10, councillors' question time, 10.1 questions on notice. Councillor Hume is listening to the agenda. 10.2, Seo, provide the response, please.
Thank you. For the benefit of those watching, I'll read out the question. Councillor Hume's question was in relation to electric vehicles. The question sets out a number of points, noting that 11% of new car sales in Australia in 2023 were electric vehicles, and that the number of EVs sold is more than doubling every year. One, please provide the following information or an estimate, if an exact answer is not possible, of the number of registered private EVs in Clarence, and what percentage of registered vehicles, private vehicles this represents, the number and location of private EV charging stations in Clarence, the number and location of private EV charging stations in Clarence, that's repeated, sorry about that. What is the council's understanding of the current and projected future EV charging infrastructure needs in Clarence, and the capacity of the private sector to deliver it? And does council have any plans to assist in the delivery of EV charging infrastructure further to the installation of an EV charging station at the council chambers? The answer to those questions is as follows. Most recent statistics indicate there are 51 privately registered EVs in Clarence with nine public charging stations. Council has received external advice that no further charging stations are needed in Clarence at this time. However, officers are continually working with industry partners to ensure fit-for-purpose infrastructure is considered. Planning is well underway for council's light vehicle fleet to transition towards electric vehicles, as well as investigating additional charging infrastructure. A briefing report based on your questions will be provided to councillors.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.3, answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, that's as listed in the agenda. Moving on to 10.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor, starting this evening with councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Maybe this one might go to our comms team. Sorry. With regards to communications, I guess my question is, we've had an overwhelming, some of us have had an overwhelming amount of younger people in the community that have wanted to have their say on the High Performance Centre in a positive way. And so their mechanism is through social media. Is there an easier way for them to get their message out to the broader people of Clarence? Because there is an overwhelming youth out there that aren't apparently getting heard. I would just like to have some advice on the best way to ask people. Do we have them in for a deputation? Do we ask them all to come in like we have seen earlier tonight? What would be the best way?
Before I ask Miss Wicks to answer that, those are my colleagues. The questions come to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
And then we'll determine when they go. But Miss Wicks, please.
Through you, ma'am. We do have campaigns through social media, but I would like to take that on notice and consider it further and come back to you.
Thank you, Miss Wicks. Councillor Kennedy, another one?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chor, councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have two questions. The first one I asked last year, I don't recall which meeting, about the tree strategy, which I understand was on hold at the time. Could I please have an update on that, please, given that we are planning to cut down a significant number of mature trees in the area, and I want to know what plans we have for replacing those and increasing our tree canopy?
Thank you councillor Warren. Mr Gray.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll take that one on notice and provide councillor an update on the urban tree strategy.
Thank you. So if we could ask it to be in the next weekly briefing report, that would be appreciated, please. Councillor Warren, your second question.
Yeah, my second question is, earlier in the meeting, you as mayor tabled a communication to do with the AFL Centre. And my question is to you, will you also be tabling the significant number of negative letters that we received on the topic?
So councillor Warren, thank you for your question. The mayor, referring to our rules, the mayor or chairperson may make any communication to the council which the mayor or chairperson considers necessary. I made that call, that's my prerogative. So the answer is clearly no. Thank you. Councillor Darka.
Kind of following on from councillor Warren's question, I was contacted by a resident today concerned that the removal of trees on Natown Hill. He said that what appeared to be completely healthy bottles were being chopped down along the track, and he was asking, "How is this assessed as being a fire danger when they did appear completely healthy?" And I'm wondering, were alternatives to tree removal considered, and how might we avoid removing trees more often in future?
Thank you councillor Darka. Mr Gray also here?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll take that one on notice, because there would have been specific reasons for, I'm sure, for those tree removals. So I'll get the details of that information and provide it to council.
Thank you. Second question, councillor Darka. Thank you. Councillor Going.
I have put in an elected member request in regards to this, but it seems the matter, I've been speaking to the resident of 62 Bastick Street in regards to an easement adjacent to the property. She has been in communications many times, I believe, with council over years. She is quite concerned, due to her age and ill health, that she would really like it tidied up for her will before her death. And I was hoping maybe to make a slightly fast update on my elected member request of the 5th of December, as to what the progress is on the selling and/or allocation of easement adjacent to 62 Bastick Street.
Thank you. Seo. Councillor Going.
My second question relates to the hard waste. I've had a lot of contact since Christmas in regards to people just realising that obviously we're not going to be hosting the hard waste this year. In previous years, a concern, particular concern has been that the hard waste, was the hard waste itemised on our rates, or is it just something that is considered to be a service provided, or is it something that was paid for by the residents and not necessarily provided? And do we have an update on our plans going forwards for, I know we looked into options of maybe like a, you know, booking service for certain residents and other options?
Seo, you and Mr Gray.
Thank you. There was a couple of questions buried in there. I'll attempt to answer them. We might go back to the tape and add some further information. In terms of the funding, it doesn't appear on the rates as a separate item, as I recall. It is a cost that's incurred through our operational budget, so it's effectively included in the general rate. But I'll confirm that for you. And in terms of the second part of your question, any change to our current position in terms of hard waste collection would be a matter for the upcoming budget, and that's obviously an issue that we will discuss during that process.
councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll beg your indulgence for a bit of a preamble, but I promise you I'll keep it short. In relation to the High Performance Centre, we've seen concept plans, but the detailed design hasn't been done yet. And there's a number of things that, you know, we're looking at potentially happening. The possibility, I understand the report said the skate park may possibly need to be removed, but it wasn't a fait accompli. But then there was the opportunity mentioned to develop, you know, some youth-related activity centre elsewhere. There's consideration of how it's going to affect the tennis club. There's also the, you know, how it's going to affect the design of the other areas of the parklands that aren't covered by the centre and in relation to the city heart plan. I'm just wondering what the timeframe is going to be to iron out some of these details and find out what's going to be happening.
Thank you, Seo.
Thank you. I can't give you a precise answer at this point in time, save to say that we have, since we returned from the Christmas break, we've been working on, from council's side, what we consider to be key terms for the heads of agreement. I have a preliminary meeting with the Department of State Growth on Thursday in regard to that. And those are the sort of issues that we'll be looking to flesh out in terms of not only design, key stakeholders, how those processes will be managed, and who's responsible for each of those. So I should be able to provide more of an update in the next couple of weeks, I would hope.
Second question. Thank you. Councillor Hunter.
One question, on behalf of some residents from Hara and Tranmere. Is there a possibility that council will investigate erecting a fence around the play equipment at Corella Park?
Thank you, Seo.
Thank you for that question. I'll need to take that one on notice. I'm aware that there is an elected member request in at the moment that deals with a similar issue on a broader scale around our policies and practices for fencing and play equipment and that interplay. So I'll take that on notice, and in all likelihood, that will also come out as a weekly briefing report item once we finalise that advice.
councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have two questions. My first one relates to a communication that you had with Mr Ian Roberts of Opossum Bay concerning Spit Farm Road.
Mr Ian Sale.
Ian Sale, sorry.
Mr Sale.
And the fact is that, that, sorry, the content of that correspondence was the fact that Spit Farm Road, although it's deplorable and totally unfit to safe, is something that council cannot be spending money on. And also, you've ruled out the alternative of connecting through a bypass through Badeega Bay to service the golf course, which goes through private property. Unfortunately, as you point out, that subdivision that was long planned for that area cannot go ahead due to the fact that it falls outside the urban growth boundary. So my question is, is that how come we can, you know, be so keen to switch the urban growth boundary when it suits the Skylines development, but we can't, we're simply not entertaining the prospect of moving this, the urban growth boundary to allow for suitable thing there, suitable development in Opossum Bay, when in fact, you know, that is immensely suitable to it, and we would get the bonus? So either, why can't, my question is, why can't we either support a movement of the urban growth boundary, or secondly, construct the alternative road anyway?
councillor Mulder, thank you for the question. And as you may be aware from the discussions with Mr Sale, I have a great deal of sympathy for his position. I think we all do. And I think you raise some very good points. And I'm sure we'd all agree that we'd like to see a solution sooner rather than later, because that part of our city is just going to take off, particularly when Armend becomes operational, and also too, when the water goes through as well. So there is a lot of sympathy there from my perspective. I think I outlined that in my response to Mr Sale, and also my several conversation with him over recent months. But Seo, is there anything else you'd like to add to this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll take that on notice. There's some questions there that would require a more in-depth response, so we'll provide that through a weekly briefing report.
councillor Mulder, your second question, please.
My second question, Mr Mayor, was moved through before, and it relates to the mayor of communications. It's all the positive news and none of the negative news. And my question relates to, surely in the interest of balance, Mr Mayor, you should at least give us the number of letters you've had for and against, rather than just flag-waving the nice ones.
councillor Mulder, thank you for your question. Again, I refer to the consolidated meeting procedures. It's my prerogative. I've been elected on a positive platform, and I will continue to be a positive advocate for this city and all that this council determines to do. Thank you for your question. Deputy mayor.
Just a very quick one in relation to the consultation that's been undertaken in relation to a potential new youth centre in the city. I'm just wondering when we may expect to see any information flow from the consultation, the survey, the online survey and that sort of material, when we might expect a timeline for perhaps the first flush of information to come back to councillors?
Thank you councillor Ritchie. Mrs Cobden.
Through you, ma'am. Yes, we're expecting the consultants' reports, a draft this month for us to consider, with a final in February. So as soon as that information's available, we'll make it available to councillors.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. I note now that we have arrived at item 11, which is to close the meeting, so I'll call for motion to move into closed meeting. Move to deputy mayor's second, councillor Going. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you. So thank you to those members of the public who attended in person this evening, and to those also joining us via the live stream. We look forward to seeing you in three weeks' time, same place, same time. Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Please end the food.